Okay, at seven o'clock we'll begin our meeting. This is the amended minutes, I mean agenda. It's a regular board meeting of the Friendswood Zoning Board of Adjustments. That will be held here tonight at seven o'clock to hear this one item. Now, the first order is all of our chair and vice-chair have had problems. So, we have to select a chairman for tonight. We need a nominee from the panel?
I'll make the nomination.
Turn on your mic. I thought it is on.
Just speak up, please.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Okay.
I nominate Mr. Brian Service Chairman.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Now, let me explain our meeting. We have it split into two essential parts. One's a public hearing where the staff, the one seeking the variance, and anybody from the public that wants to can make, can speak and ask questions. Second, when we close that part, then it becomes our meeting, and we are the ones who are going to ask the questions. So, we have to have a supermajority, it's five of us, we have to have at least four votes for anything to carry. Now, anybody that would like to speak tonight, we need to have you stand and be sworn in. So, everyone who would like to speak, please stand and be sworn in.
Raise the right hand.
Okay, now, everyone raise the right hand. Do each of you solemnly swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth on matters before this board this evening? Okay? Okay, well, now, we have our introduction. Our new city attorney, at least new to me.
Can you hear me, Jeff? Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Mary Kay Fisher. I'm your city attorney, and I'm glad to be here with you this evening. This is the first time we've gotten together since I've been here, and I look forward to working with y'all. I did have an overview, but since I see that there are going to be some different members within the next few months, I think I'll just wait and go ahead and move forward with the meeting tonight, and just do a little brief overview when we have new members, if that's okay with y'all.
That's good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now, the board tonight is going to hear a request to reduce the required set, required side yard setback from the required 25-foot to 20-feet on the property located at 2210 South Friendswood Drive, abstract, nine-page, 13 S part of lot 45, 45-2, Sloane's Unrecorded Subdivision, Friendswood, Galveston County. And our staff presentation.
Good evening. As far as, as far as the staff presentation, it's relatively simple on the first item. The setback requirements, when it abuts the residential lots, is 25-feet. The applicant turned in a site plan for approval at 20-feet for the building. At that point, we denied their site plan, and they sought to come to this board for a variance. The site plan showed the building at 20-feet, so they're looking for a 5-foot variance.
And that's, there's more to the variance than that, and there, and there more to the variance?
On the, the first part of the application is for the setback of the building. The second part will be for the paving over the landscape.
Okay, so, we're just, this is the first item then. Okay, the applicant would like to make a presentation?
Hello, everybody. My name is Brian, I'm an engineer for gentlemen here that were going to be developing this new project.
Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this on? Can everybody hear me? Okay. And what we're trying to do is create a convenience store here for the neighborhood. We know that there is nothing remotely even close to for any type of convenience whatsoever for any of the residents around the area. So, we would like to be able to create this convenience store, gas station, fueling, also for those times in need when we've got emergency situations where people need to fill up with gas to be able to get out of the location, in case of flooding. We've had a lot of that to do. So, this gas station is going to help with everybody around the area to be able to have another location to fill up with gas, fuel, foods, water, et cetera, to be able to get your, your basic needs when we have an emergency situation. Now, also, what we're going to do is we're going to increase the property surrounding. We're going to make this a nice building. It's going to be very sound. It's going to be all concrete block, which is very quiet to the exterior from anything that's going on inside, as well as the opposite, remains very, very strong through the test of time. So, won't have any problems with construction, with the building, the way it looks deteriorating, et cetera, et cetera. Now, what we are looking for is, as the gentleman read, a request for the building to be set at 20-feet back due to the fact that this property is very shallow, it's very, it doesn't have too much depth to it. In order to provide everything that we need for this store to go up, to run efficiently, to be built properly, and to run per code, we really need this 5-feet. The building itself only being 50-feet deep is not extraordinarily large for this type of building. However, it is a standard which has been set throughout pretty much designing a convenience store and/or a gas station, to have the revenue to be able to make this site actually work. So, we do need that 5-feet, if at all possible. We are planning on putting up fencing, which will separate the residential from the commercial. Planning on putting up a CMU block wall, which is eight inches thick. We will fill that with a substance called perlite, which reduces any kind of noise between the neighboring properties. So, that will never be an issue. Also, it creates security for the property that we're developing from anything outside the property area, which helps. So, we have a deterrent to be able to break into this, which, well, creates less problems for everybody around. The less problems we have, the less revenue that's spent from the city, and we can spend that on something else. So, you know, we'd like to be able to get this variance if possible, not just for the convenience store, but also for a retail strip center that we're going to provide here as a lease space. Now, we're not exactly sure what may be put into this lease space at this point in time. However, we're going to make it possible so that someone can create some more revenue. Maybe we can create a few more jobs in here as well. So, right now, you know, we'd like to be able to, to set this forth. Hopefully, everybody will see the advantages to building this convenience store and allowing us to have these setbacks and requests as, you know, we have done so. And if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions of the applicant from the, anybody on the, in the audience? Well, okay. Is anybody, would anybody, okay, after, forgive me. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for this applicant? Required to ask this three times? Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak for the applicant? Okay. Is anybody in the audience who would like to speak for the applicant? Okay. Now, are there any comments against the applicant? Come forward, sir.
Hi, my name is Marcus Rives. I'm a designer here in Friendswood. I've designed several commercial properties around town. My issue with, with this variance would be that it kind of, it breaks the rules. It doesn't comply with the ordinances which the city has set forward. I've had to comply with them on everything I've done in the city, and I don't know that it's fair to give a variance for something that's not a hardship. I've always been told that ZBOA was mostly put in place because of hardships, and hardships meaning working around disabilities and things of that nature. I think the 25-foot building line is there for a reason, for residential, and I don't see a reason why you couldn't be able to cut 5-feet off the building or rework something. If, if you do decide to go 20-feet on the side, I think that there ought to be approval from the residential people adjacent to it. I don't think it's quite fair to them. Also, I've designed buildings here in Friendswood where we've had issues that aren't even on the thoroughfare, any of the major thoroughfares, but we've had to comply with these ordinances on heritage and some of the other streets, just because we're in close proximity to the thoroughfares. And I just think that you guys ought to take into consideration that this doesn't seem to be real hardship, it's just a convenience, and it's not part of the city ordinances.
Okay, so, you don't have any, yours is more of a general requirement?
No, specifically, I think the 25-foot ought to be enforced, and also the landscaping buffer at the front should be enforced.
In the front? Thought the landscape buffering was in the back.
I am a former P&amp;Z commissioner as well, and I mean, I know what's there and what it should be, and I know how to read plans, and I'm just asking you guys to enforce the ordinances of the city.
Did we get any letters back from the landowners close, adjacent to this?
No, sir.
We didn't? Okay, there. You know, is there anybody else who would like to speak against this? Sir?
I'm not speaking against, I'm just, I'm not.
Okay, just come here, let them do it. Please identify yourself.
My name's Don Seifert. I'm at 2304 Old Road, that is directly behind, south of the property that they're wanting to develop. I'm not speaking against or for. You might call me a libertarian. I'm a very, very strong advocate of individual property rights. What that individual owner does with that property, I couldn't care less. I just want to put in the record, we want to make real sure that everybody knows we live back there with grandchildren, and at no time when they develop, whether they're developing Old Road or that property, can we have access to 518 impeded. Got to have 24/7, can never be shut down. That's my only comment. Now, with regard to the north part of our property, on the north side, directly between this property to be developed and my property, there's a 30-foot road easement. I would strongly request that that easement not be deteriorated or abandoned in any way because my property is on the market, and that will have a very detrimental effect if I lose that 30-foot road easement in front of my property.
Are you talking about the road easement that runs across?
It runs east-west on the north side of my property.
Okay.
Yeah. There's the 50-foot old road easement.
Right. You're talking about the one that's perpendicular to the?
Correct, correct. I want to make sure that we don't abandon that. How y'all decide to use it in, in your authority as the P&amp;Z, I don't care, just so long as that road easement can always be used as an access road.
Well, best one item we're not even addressing here.
I understand.
I know, I'm just saying that.
I just wanted to divorce my, I fully understand. I just wanted to enter my comments into the record, and that's my only comments, is keep that road easement and make sure we don't lose access so we can get in and out. What they do with the property, it's their property.
Thank you. Any other?
My name is Larry Tilger. I'm the property owner, just.
Can you speak up? I may have to.
I'm sorry, Larry Tilger. I'm the property owner, just toward the park. Have two lots in the, in the, in the Sloan subdivision. I'm immediately adjacent to this property, and I'm right beside.
So, you have these two properties right here?
They're, yeah, they're right.
Yes, sir.
About the park, and then this one right next to it. You know, for as far as the 5-foot setback, but then I, I learned tonight that I, I can't tell if the drainage, if you're planning to drain all this drainage through the swell or drain it right across the middle of my lot, that's going to be a big problem as far as, you know, because this is a residential lot, I do plan on selling some more down the road. If he plans to drain it.
Drainage just to 518.
Well, he, I, from what he's saying, it's going to go across my property.
Unfortunately, that's not up for debate right now.
Well, I know that's not part of this specifically, but I probably have to address the drainage district or somebody on that issue.
Okay, but from the fact that he wants to build, so have a 25-foot setback, you know, from here to there, he wants to come in only 20-foot, and that'd be on the long side of your property.
I understand, I understand that, I understand that.
But I mean, same, what is your, you have any?
Well, I'm just, I just, I'd never seen this before tonight, and he's the one that was explaining it to me, so I may need to get him to explain it, and then maybe go back to the drainage district on this.
I'm, I'm talking about just the building, not the drainage.
I understand, I understand. I don't have a problem with what he's doing as far as the structure.
That won't hurt your use of the land.
And there will not be, well, that's a drainage problem.
Okay, so, okay, you're only concerned in is the drainage? So, yes, your concern is drainage?
Yeah, my, yeah, because according to what you're saying, he's going to drain right across the middle of my property.
There's a big swale back there. Yeah, big, big swale. Okay.
But he wants, sounds like he wants to drain the whole thing across the middle of the property.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the motion, sir? You're not appointed, you're just, well.
He is an alternate.
He's an alternate, is, can he speak as a citizen? No?
He's a resident?
Okay, we need to come up, identify yourself.
Live at 1527 Garden Lakes Drive. I've looked at a lot of information on this and online, brought down what was publicly available, and the first thing that came to my mind was that this is a new build and purchasing a property, you understand, you should understand what the city ordinance is already. It's not an existing structure that needs to be updated or be taken out of a grandfathering mode. We put these 25-foot setbacks in order to protect the public from buildings being too close, blocking things or being too close in case there's an accident or some other reason. And so, my opinion is, in this case, I would like to, the board to consider, since this was a new build, just to go ahead and enforce the setbacks as they were because it was a choice to purchase and build at this location. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else now who would like to speak against this application? The public hearing is now closed, and it's now open to the panel, the board. Comments? I have one question. It's 25, there's 5-foots in the back there. What kind of business is going to be conducted back in the back? I mean, what, are there going to be trucks coming and delivering in the back, or what's happening back there?
No, sir. No, the only thing that will be happening back there would be the possibility of somebody coming out the back, which would be an employee only, or in case of an emergency, we do have some emergency exit doors at the back. There will be a sidewalk to then egress out to the front of the building, which is what fire marshal is required, as well as, as well as ADA, to be able to get out into the open area in case of an emergency to step away from the burning building and what have you. That's the only kind of type of, anything that's going to be going on back there. It'll be very minimal, it'll be very sparse, and what does happen back there will be, one, maybe two people every couple of hours, maybe, just to clean up and to throw trash. It is made to be able to take trash and debris out of the back of the building, so they're not coming through the front sales area where all the food and the drinks are sold and supplied to the public, so we can keep cross-contamination away from all of our products, and we're not seen dragging across the sales floor with a, you know, dirty garbage bag, just to be able to get to the dumpsters so that we can get rid of debris. That's about it, other than maintenance, of course, to cut the lawn, to prune the trees, bushes, et cetera. That's about the only activity that's going to be going on back there.
So, there's no, you're not going to have a heavy delivery?
Oh, no, sir. No, no, no pavement back there at all, no delivery trucks, no, sir. No, we'll be doing all that from the front.
I do have a question. If you're going to be moving the building 5-feet closer to the back wall, I'm assuming that will increase the, the amount of height on the building you'll be able to see from the other side of the wall?
Not necessarily. The, the backside of the wall, we're going to keep the parapet walls at a minimal height. The storm drainage, of course, is going to be on a sloped roof, which always drains to the back. It'll be collected with a gutter, but there will be a parapet wall and screening, which will hold anything and any view of anything from the building. Now, as far as being close to that 8-foot fence, I highly doubt it unless you are very close to the eve of your own house, and you would probably have to be about a good 50, 60-feet away from your fence to be able to see the backside of the building. I mean, otherwise, you're really not going to see it. You may see some light generated facing away from you, coming over the top side of that CMU wall that we're proposing at 8-foot. Other than that, no, sir, you will not be seeing anything. The only grand part of that building is going to be in the very front, which will be facing Friendswood Drive, which you can see over the fuel canopy coming from the roadway, and that's only on a corner-cut face. Everything else will then come down as we come away from that grand entry.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, certainly.
What is your hardship?
Well, hardship is the fact that the property is so shallow with a large landscaping setback, which I've dealt with a lot of cities, a lot of counties, and a lot of landscaping setback requirements, and I understand what they're for. Now, in a convenience store and a store something like this, you need at least a 50-foot minimum depth on that foot, on the building itself, to be able to create inside that store to generate the revenue that it would take to be able to run that store. I have built, designed several stores at 40-feet, which does not allow you a whole lot of anything. There are a lot of elements with inside the convenience store which take up a lot of floor space and don't allow for a whole lot of movement. So, you don't see an occupancy count, which is so high, most of the time in most convenience stores where you don't even require sprinkler system, they're so low. Because of that requirement, because of that limitation, is why we're asking for that 10-feet that, that we normally would put in just about any convenience store that we've designed in the Houston, greater Houston area, southeast, southwest Texas, mid-Texas, just about everywhere I've been to. Sugar Land, Missouri City, Santa Fe, Manville, Alvin, you name it. I've been developing just about everywhere, and I have not had to deal with such a large landscaping setback. You know, I understand the reasoning behind it. However, I don't think it's really necessary, and it's not going to cause any ill effect to any of the surrounding residential properties or commercial property concerning the setback for that building. Plus the fact that the building is all made of CMU, so anything that happens inside the building is not going to cause any kind of, oh, let's say, any disturbances, noise, either way. It's a very sound building, and it's going to be a very sound complex, it's going to be kept very clean, lit, well-lit for security reasons, mainly for women and children is who we have in mind when we're designing these convenience stores. We want them to feel safe, we want them to feel like they can go to this convenience store at any point in time with as many children that they have with them as possible. And I know that it's quite hard to look after a lot of children when you've got them all with you at once, so we want a complex that's going to be safe for them, and that's what we're intending on doing. Yes, ma'am?
You just mentioned lights. Made me think. What kind of lights are you going to have across the back of this that might shine on this other property?
On the, the backside of the building is going to be very minimal lighting. The only lighting we're going to really provide at the back of the building is going to be for egress on emergency situation only, which is going to be just above the back doors so that you create illumination in case of an emergency or for one of the employees to come throw trash at the nighttime, you have a lit-up sidewalk. Probably be about maybe 100 watts each, and there's only going to be about four or five of them total on the backside. That's including the retail building that's cited. So, it's very minimal lighting. We will have a shielding on the top side of that lighting so that the lighting runs down at a 45-degree angle, and will only shine past the sidewalk, I want to say approximately 10 to 15 feet. So, there won't be any illumination coming up or shining over the backside of that fence to the neighboring property.
If, if the convenience store were limited to the square footage that would only be available without the variance?
Uh huh.
Would that then make development of a convenience store in that location untenable because of that square footage?
Yes, sir, it certainly would. With what it takes for construction cost, what it takes time-wise to be able to get to everything permitted, approved, health department, fire code, et cetera, et cetera, when it all comes down to it, yes, sir, you will not make the monies, the revenue, the business will die, and you will be left with a building that is sitting there for quite a long time until someone can figure out what they can do with a shallow piece of property on a commercial site. It will have to be turned into residential. You really wouldn't be able to do anything else with it. A convenience store is usually one of the smaller commercial units that you can design. Most of the time, it's on maybe a half, two, or three-quarters of an acre, and it's usually on the intersection. So, with something like this, we're usually at about 200-feet by 200-feet. That being the case, yes, sir, it pretty much would kill the convenience store.
Thank you.
And the fuel, which I feel is really desperately needed, you know, for the area. There's very minimal around, and you have to travel quite a distance to be able to get your fuel, you know, and/or anything convenient, you may need to stop on the way home, instead of running to the convenience store or the grocery store, which is, I understand, about 30 minutes away.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did you need to move this back to get enough adequate parking spaces to meet our requirements?
Yes, sir, correct, yes. Parking spaces along with the required distance behind parking spaces that you have to have per code to be able to back into that open area to get out of that parking space, require 24-feet minimum. So, you have a 20-foot parking space, 24-foot between, and then 20-foot in front, so that you've got all that area to be able to utilize. Now, these particular, can be, commercial units require a certain amount of parking spaces per thousand square feet. So, we had to create these parking spaces, and without them, we would be short, we would not be up to code concerning the, the amount of parking spaces that is needed for these type of businesses. And this is really pretty much a minimal. Retail is on the lower end, commercial. Now, if it were a restaurant, we'd be having to supply 10 per square foot. There's no feasible way that, that can happen there. And so, yes, sir, we need that for that, as well as, and most important, I think, would be the fire truck, to be able to get in and out of the facility, to maneuver through the facility, and to be at any point in time where they can then put out the fire at any location within that facility. Otherwise, we would not have maneuvering room for them. They require a 20-foot wide minimum lane with a return radius, which is an inside turning radius of 20-feet. Now, when you lay all that out, yes, sir, you do, you do need that room, and I could not push that building. We would not have near the parking. We'd be cut by about a third. If you can see on there as well, the parking, I don't know if I've got parking cows on this particular sheet or what you all have, but the parking that is underneath the fuel canopy is also counted as parking. So, with that there, we're, we're, we really are at a minimal for parking requirements within the parking lot itself.
Okay, so, let me make it clear. Your hardship is to make reasonable commercial use of this property due to its triangular, not triangular, but sort of triangular shape, narrow?
For the most part, yes, sir, and the, and the shallowness, the, of the depth of the property, yes, sir.
That's what I meant, well. That's what I meant, well.
Uh, understand, yes, sir, correct, yes. Yeah, and it would be impossible to develop that.
So that's the hardship you're, you're requesting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? Do you have a motion to approve the applicant's? Speak up.
I'll make the motion to approve.
We have a second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, did y'all wanna go through your, um, fact finding?
I don't have that here.
I put 'em on your computers.
I covered it up with all this stuff. Here we go, okay, I got it now. Okay, the criteria we have to meet is the variance, granted, this variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and that's everybody within Friendswood. Special conditions peculiar to the property involved, that would be the shape. Literal enforcement of ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. The grant of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The grant of variance will ensure that substantial justice will be done. To me, that means we're not gonna be harming anybody in the city or immediate neighbors. We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Okay, the motion's failed three to two. Three, four, and two against. You have to have four to, for it to pass. I thought I called for a, a vote to approve. We had three, four, and two against. I didn't. Those who are against, please raise your hand. They did, oh. Okay, okay, I'm sorry, okay, all against, okay. I need, I need a lot of help here. I'm sorry, but, uh, the application, I mean, the variance has been denied, and your only other recourse now is to either redesign or go to county court and try to get it overturned. But we are the last appeal. Now, based on that, do you wanna still go ahead and hear the other variance that you brought forward? Okay. The, uh, variance they're asking for now is to encroach nineteen-hundred-ninety-one-point-five-two square feet of pavement into the required fifteen-foot landscape buffer along the interior side yard, minimal pavement as indicated on the site plan into the required fifteen-foot landscape buffer along the exterior side yard of the property at twenty-two-ten South Friendswood Drive, abstract nine, page thirteen, S. part of lot forty-five, forty-five dash two, Sloan's Unrecorded Subdivision, Friendswood, Gallston, Texas. Staff?
Again, this is, uh, pretty simple as far as the staff presentation. The applicant turned in the site plan with the fifteen-foot required landscape buffers annotated, but in that fifteen-foot buffer, they have, uh, in, provided a exhibit where they would encroach with paving on a couple different portions. Uh, there's three locations on the site plan that probably in one of the exhibits, it should be identified with the highlight minus the building there, um, right there off, F., or South Friendswood Drive, and then two other parking locations. At that point, uh, it failed to meet our requirements in the landscape buffer, and it, the site plan was denied.
Okay, so it's these two little slivers out here facing Old, Old Road.
Actually, I think there's, there's three locations, and then this stretch.
The big, the big piece cross here.
Correct.
There's three along here? Okay, okay, I see those tiny ones. Okay, can the applicant make their presentation, please? Go ahead and re-identify yourself, please.
Okay, yes, sir. My name is, uh, Brian Baca. Uh, I am, uh, going to talk to you about the request for the variance on the landscaping buffers. Um, the reasoning for the landscaping buffer request on the variance is due to the fact of the parking that is required for these facilities here. Now, on the front side, once again, because this property is so shallow, the required amount of space that is required by code to design these parking spaces and the required amount for these buildings, um, you can see that I have pretty much utilized just about every location I could to, uh, locate and identify parking for these facilities. Now, we were a little bit shy, which is why I started to move a little bit, uh, toward the roadway with our parking. Um, you can see along Old Road, we have approximately three spaces, um, which only about the first five foot at the longest part will encroach into that particular landscape buffer, which is not much, uh, barely anything at all. Uh, the second portion along the front area there would also be parking, uh, because of the required parking amounts. We were able to locate parking in the areas that we were also utilizing underneath the fuel canopy for parking, so we really have nowhere else to put the parking spaces. Um, along that front road, we're going to have plenty of shrubbery and trees, uh, as well as grassy area to create enough of a buffer zone to where it would not, uh, negatively affect, I think, anything, uh, as far as sight is concerned. Uh, it will not be unsightly coming from the roadway, so I don't think any of the residents will have to worry about that. The noise suppression, again, it will take care of part of that and some of the pollution from the vehicle. Uh, so we'll still have plenty of landscaping here. Uh, we just need it for our parking. Now, along the backside of the residential lot, where we are requesting pavement only, is for maneuvering to be able to get into the facility from the only driveway, which we would be allowed to have from Texas Department of Transportation. Now, this driveway is a directional driveway. It's only coming into the facility, will only be allowed to enter the facility using this driveway. Now, that driveway comes at the very top north side of the property, which automatically comes into that buffer zone if that buffer zone is kept there. So that means that we would not even be able to have a driveway coming into the property on which Tech Dot is one of the most stringent people I have ever run across to be able to get a driveway. So if we were able to get one from them, I would hope that we would be able to get this small request for a landscape buffer, uh, variance to be able to put the pavement in so that we can maneuver into the facility from Friendswood Drive. Yes, sir, that's it.
Would anybody else like to speak for the applicant? Would anybody else like to speak for the applicant? Would anybody else like to speak for the applicant? Okay. Would anybody like to speak against the application for this variance? Yes, sir? Identify yourself again, please.
Don Seifert, twenty-three oh four Old Road. This is not speaking against, this is just a comment, a question. On the, uh, development of Old Road, I'm not an engineer, so when I look at these drawings, I have questions. Um, is that going to be developed into a one-way street, or is that going to, going to remain a two-way street like it is?
I don't think that's to be addressed.
Staff, address that after the meeting if you have questions.
I don't think that's, uh, a question for this board, I'm sorry.
Well, the only reason I raised it was because that encroachment, uh, onto that, that landscape area would appear, uh, to be required if you're going to narrow that road or, or widen it.
No, I think all they're doing, they're, they're encroaching on their required setback. Or they're not coming on public property. They're required to be set back a certain distance, and that drive, that parking, I'm understanding this right, the parking lot will encroach on that in three different areas by a small amount on this particular side.
Okay, so it's not, it's not encroaching on the roadway, just on their.
No, 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 this is, this is encroaching in their required setback.
Very good.
Anybody else like to speak against this?
Marcus Rives, uh, local designer. Uh, I'd just like to reiterate what I said before about the ordinances and codes are in place for a reason, and they apply to everybody. Uh, also, I think they're confusing what they need with what they want. You can still redesign the building. It may not be optimal for, optimal for what they want, but what the city requires may be different. Forty-foot deep building versus forty-five or fifty, you know, that's, that's needs versus wants. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to speak against the applicant?
Glenn Grayban, fifteen-twenty-seven Garden Lake Strive. Um, I'd like to kind of also reiterate what I said before. This is a new build with new property. There are other properties that can be had for this endeavor. Um, there, I, I don't, um, pretend to know what it really takes to run a business, so forth and so on, uh, with parking or square footage. Uh, the property is, is as it is, it can be negotiated with the seller. However, while you're doing this, I really believe that, um, we have these ordinance set up, and it is the purchaser's responsibility to purchase this land, knowing that it's gonna conform to their needs and still follow the, um, the rules and the laws set by the city that they're purchas- purchasing and developing in. Thank you very much.
Would anybody else like to speak against the applicant? Okay, the public portion of the meeting is closed, and we'll go to our board meeting. Questions? Comments? Uh, my own personal opinion is that these three little items out towards Old Road or, you know, Meniscule, there, that's not an issue. You said that the only way that you can get an entrance into this property is by coming in against the backside over there?
Correct, yes.
You can't come down this corner and get your entrance?
Uh, yes, sir, yes. We have, uh, we've had several meetings, uh, sat down and spoke with Tech Dot, several different ideas on how we would be able to utilize a driveway access from Friendswood Drive to be able to enter the facility. Uh, due to the location of the property, where it is on Friendswood Drive, which I'm sure that if you're familiar with the area, you know that it is coming just outside and coming out of a curve on Friendswood Drive. Uh, even at forty-five miles an hour, which is a minimal, uh, speed limit for Tech Dot roadways, um, it still creates a safety issue. Uh, that safety issue now brings up the, um, possibilities of cars coming in and out of the facility. Now, uh, the reasoning for the one and only directional driveway, the way it is, is to allow people to come in from that curved road, uh, at a forty-five mile an hour degree, to come into the facility without any problems and without causing a stack up, uh, into the roadway, so that when someone comes around that corner, will not hit somebody in the back end coming out of that roadway. So we have made it directional. Uh, we are only allowed to make it twenty feet wide so that it is more of a directional driveway, uh, coming from Friendswood Drive. Now, this particular driveway is going to be mainly beneficial for not just the incoming public, uh, to be able to utilize it. They have the smaller cars, and they can come in at Old Road and go out in Old Road. That's not a problem. The fuel truck coming in, we need him to come in off of the, the highway, to come into the facility and drop on the right-hand side, which is the only location that they are allowed to drop and fill in your underground fuel tanks from the right-hand side of the vehicle. That being the case, there's only so much we can do to maneuver that vehicle through the facility. Uh, even at a different design, which I have done about eight to ten of them already, this is the most feasible design, and this being the case, we need the driveway there. It's the only place that Tech Stop will allow us a driveway. Uh, we would be too close to the intersection of Old Road and Friendswood Drive, uh, at, at any other location, so they will not allow it.
That's the reason that they're just, uh, twenty feet drive is because of Old Road?
Well, i- it's, it's because of the fact that they wanna ensure that that driveway is utilized for a directional in-only driveway is the reason for the twenty-foot width on the driveway. Um, the directional, uh, location and the angular, uh, placement of that driveway is also, once again, to ensure that it's only an in-driveway. Uh, people are not going to tend to wanna come out of that skewed driveway and turn about a hundred and ninety degrees, the opposite direction, to get into the, the roadway there. Uh, so we're going to utilize it as a single road. Now, as far as the driveways on Old Road, yes, we're planning on also improving Old Road so that it is not just a gravel dirt road, but it is a concrete roadway, which will also ultimately keep the access to the gentleman's property in back of us, as well as to the side of us, as well as on the opposite side of Old Road. It now creates a nice, clean access roadway to be able to get into those facilities, more of a permanent structure where someone is not tending to want to redesign and/or get rid of, especially city. Takes a little bit of money and a lot of time, uh, to be able to remove something like that once it's put in. So our driveway there, yes, sir, is very, very important. It's the only driveway that we have been allowed from Tech Stop, the only location and the only configuration that we can get into from Friendswood Drive. Unfortunately, that puts us into that landscaping buffer area along the backside of that property, uh, as well as the pavement that we've got there to maneuver in the facility once you get in the driveway.
I'm sorry, but I can't really tell how much landscaping buffer is left at.
Uh, I believe it's fifteen feet, if I'm not mistaken, at the front part of, uh, Friendswood Drive is a requirement?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
But I mean, how much is gonna be left?
Oh, oh, um, we have eight, I believe, eight feet, eight and a half feet of landscaped area back there. I have only taken about four and a half feet. It still should be plenty of room to, uh, install your trees, which are required in the buffer zone, as well as the shrubbery.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve the application for the variance?
Motion to approve.
I need a second. Okay, we have a motion, and it's been seconded.
Need to go through all the different, um, items before you vote again?
I have to go over these again for each item. Granted, the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. There are special conditions peculiar to the property involved. Literal enforcement of ordinances will result in unnecessary hardship. The grant of the variance is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance. The grant of the variance will ensure that, the grant of the variance will ensure that substantial justice will be done. Those are the requirements we have. Now, all in favor? All opposed? I'm afraid it's failed three to two. Again, uh, your only recourse for either of these variances is to go to court. Uh, we are the last, you know, appeal on this, on this, unless you go to court. Okay, uh, the next order of business is consideration and approval of the minutes from last meeting on May twenty-third. It's been a while. And I'm afraid I missed that one, so I'm allowing y'all to, uh, check that out for me.
I'll make a motion to approve as is.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
All approved? Miss Carey, five, nothing. Do you have any further comments for any board members? Attorney? Staff? Can I have a motion to move to adjourn? Second? Have a second? All approved? Raise your hand. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.